I love that she is not only bilingual. In fact, she's a certificate court interpreter for English and Spanish. That she's also bilingual and bicultural. And I love that she has taught in high schools and can use that understanding and background to help prepare our grade schoolers for the challenges ahead. She's an AP test reader, not just an advanced placement teacher, but a teacher who so consistently empowered her students to pass their AP Spanish test that she was invited to collaborate with teachers from 22 other countries in calibrating the grading exam. Someday, my children will take the Spanish AP exam. And who better to guide them through the DI portion of their Spanish education than someone already recognized for her expertise in this field? She is also a strong leader with proven skills when it comes to working with her staff, both as a trainer of teachers in all subject areas, formerly known as BITSA, I think now is called New Teacher Induction, and also as a parent support provider for tenured teachers who are not performing. We have right now someone who is overwhelmingly qualified to lead our school in terms of her academic and language achievements and who has the strength of character required. Principal Cuevas is a leader for the whole school. So I ask you please to table Principal Cuevas's resignation tonight and to please work with her. She is the right person to lead our school and she needs the board's respect and support to do her job poorly. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Cecilia Manon. Thank you for letting me speak again. I'm Superintendent Lincoln. I am here to support our principal, Mrs. Cuevas. I have met with Principal Cuevas on a couple occasions and I have to say she is exactly what our school needs. She's experienced bilingual administrator who has demonstrated to myself and many others her dedication to school and students. With the revolving door principals at Lincoln, I think we're all apprehensive about who is going to be next. But I can honestly say that we couldn't be happier with Mrs. Cuevas. I've spoken with many teachers at Lincoln and they are very supportive of her and the progress she has made in such a short time. We now have a principal who has provided much-needed structure and you are willing to let her go. Did you meet with the staff at Lincoln, both certified and classified, to see how they felt about this administrator? I think you would be pleasantly surprised by their responses. Did you perform any work evaluation on her? What standard did you use to determine Principal Cuevas is unfit or unfit? Standards are nonconfidential. If Principal Cuevas leaves and stops her incredible work at the school, we must start all over again. Can you guarantee that the next principal will stay more than a year? What if the bullies don't like him or her? What if he or she says no to them and they come running to the district? Are you going to entertain their complaints and remove another principal like you have done in the past and are doing now? Over the past four years, the bullies have run to the district for yeses when they hear no's from the principals. And every time they get that yes, the district action undermines the ability of the administrator to maintain a climate of equity. It happened to Mrs. Rains and now it's happened to Mrs. Cuevas. I was PCU president when Mr. Dillinger took over and he tried, but where is he now and where are we now? We want to know why you hire employees you will not support. Perhaps being divisive, the people who are being divisive should be asked to leave, not Mrs. Cuevas. Lincoln's problems have been growing steadily for the past four years and they aren't going to be fixed in one year. We are requesting that Mrs. Cuevas will stay on as a principal and that you allow her to because we know she does want to stay and she wants to support our school. The students love her, enjoy her. She includes everybody at that school. She's working day by day in rebuilding the positive learning and working environment Lincoln once was. We finally have an administrator equally invested in all four programs at our school. Please help us fight for her. Superintendent Martinez, when you accepted this position, did you think it would fix the problems in the district in a year? I would like to think about that. Why only give Mrs. Cuevas one year to fix the problems and say she would be let go if the problems were not fixed? This is a reason for her resignation, not because she wants to leave, but because if she did not submit a resignation, she would be let go. What kind of choice is that? Being let go is a personal action that would tarnish your stellar education record. She should be asking for her resignation. We, she should, I'm sorry. Should we be asking for her resignation and for all the problems the district haven't been fixed? I don't think we should ask you and I don't think we should ask Mrs. Cuevas either. And again, the problems at Lincoln didn't happen overnight and they won't be fixed overnight. But Mrs. Cuevas, leading the school the way she is, we finally have hope that we are moving in the right direction. Please table Principal Cuevas's resignation and work with her so that Lincoln can become the great school again and we can all work together. Thank you.
Hi, once again, my name is Adriana Phillips. I have three kids at school. I'm here to express my support of our principal, Mrs. Cuevas, who has brought new life to our school. Excuse me. She has been highly professional and dedicated to our staff and students. I was the chair of our science camp committee this year at school. The first time Lincoln has been able to send a class to science camp for a week. Both Ms. Cuevas and I were new to the process, but her support made it happen. We experienced many setbacks through the planning and fundraising process, so many that science camp was not going to be an option next year. However, Mrs. Cuevas visited the camp and saw what a wonderful opportunity it was for our students and agreed we must continue to promote it for next year. She earned my respect during this very trying time by putting the needs of our students over the wants of our parents. Another example of her dedication to all of the students at Lincoln pertains to my son, who is in a first grade class. This class has a high number of IAPs, my son being one of them. In the past, I've had to fight for my son to get the resources he needs. Mrs. Cuevas is a first principal who has taken action to get aides in the classroom to make it a teaching, positive learning environment. She's accessible and approachable to all. I have never had one unreturned email or phone call, even if it was after school hours. Our most recent principals have been bullied out of our school and it appears to be happening again. She has only our children's best interest in mind, not her own agenda. At what point are you as a board going to follow through and support the staff that you hired? As parents, we demand that things change at Lincoln. Our children are being held hostage in this unhealthy environment of dysfunction, but a small minority of parents and teachers want it their way. The inconsistency for our children at Lincoln School is astounding. Would you want your child to attend such an unstable learning environment? Our kids spend a majority of their day with the staff at Lincoln. Stability in school is just as important as stability in the home. Your job as school board is to ensure that our children receive the best possible education that could be provided to them. That includes having a competent, dedicated staff and Mrs. Cuevas fits the description. We gave her a chance, why won't you? Please table Mrs. Cuevas's resignation and work with her and work with each other so that she may stay at Lincoln. She can rescind her resignation, rendering the need for you to vote on accepting her resignation move. Let us all work together to fix our school.
Good evening. My name is Jackie and I'm actually, I was asked by another parent to read something regarding Mrs. Cuevas. So I am writing because I've heard of Mrs. Cuevas, principal of Lincoln Elementary resigning at the end of this year. As a parent of a third grade DI student and an entry DI kindergarten student, I am concerned about this. The past few years at Lincoln have been rather shaky. So many good teachers have left because of tension between the SCI and the DI programs. And last year, my daughter had teacher changes three times. Now we are losing another principal after only one year. This is a great concern as consistency is such an important part of our children's successful education. Last year, we had one principal with his way of leading, disciplining, and positive reinforcement. This year, we have another. And now we will have to deal with trying to adjust to another principal and their methods next year. Explain to me how this is going to be a positive influence on our students' learning, please? Because I have already noticed some serious difficulties with my daughter's learning as a result of the teacher changes last year. There are other concerns that I have regarding literacy programs that have lost consistency as well as the fact that Mrs. Cuevas's letter of resignation clearly points out the fact, the lack of support towards her leadership decision as well. Please fix this before our students lose another good leader. Thank you, Jennifer Moore.
Good evening. My name is Sherlina Espinoza Monroe. I am a Lincoln mom. And my daughter's in fourth grade. She's been there since kindergarten and I have also seen the revolving door principals. At first, we had Ms. Rains, a most beloved principal. And when she left, in the great principal fiasco of the last superintendent's reign, it was devastating. And you know, then Mrs. Cuevas came this year and you know, you never know what you're going to get. And then we saw what we got. And we were, I'm not sure the word. We were happy for certain, but it was more than that. It was kind of like a weight was lifted because it looked like things were going really well. She is a mom, she is a grandma, she is an educator, she is bilingual. She has so many things. If we could have chosen, we would have asked for that. An answer to prayer, truly. So then I hear that she's resigning and then I hear why she is resigning. And it was upsetting for very many reasons. She needs support, clearly. I know you guys understand chain of command and if people are going over her head and complaining, it is your job to put them in their place and give them protocol, not to harass her out of her job. She is what we need. We need clarity and transparency and support, not harassment. I cannot believe we are here again discussing another Lincoln principal and another Lincoln, another beloved Lincoln principal being run out of town. This position is becoming the defense against the dark arts of Lincoln School. Do you guys really want to be Voldemort here? I challenge you to stand up, to apologize for the lack of support. And I challenge you to be the example of making the hard decisions and doing what is right, being the example for all the students and for the thousands of people that those students represent, for your own families and for the community. I encourage you to not accept her resignation and to fix this. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Cecilia Dawson and I'm reading this on behalf of Laura Palmer, a DI Lincoln parent. The huge problems at Lincoln School between the DI and SCI programs are longstanding, deep-seated issues that have continued to worsen for the past few years. There are conflicts among the staff and among parents. Mrs. Cuevas has worked extremely hard this school year to help resolve many of the issues, but she cannot do it alone. She does not want to resign but has felt forced to do so because she cannot meet an unrealistic expectation that she alone should be able to fix all the problems at Lincoln by the end of the school year. This is your first year, Superintendent Martinez. Would you like the same unrealistic expectation on you to fix by the end of the school year, the longstanding, deep-seated issues at SCES? Mrs. Cuevas wants to stay at Lincoln and continue the work she has begun toward unifying the school and ensuring equity between the DI and the three other programs, equity for all four programs at Lincoln. She believes the needs of the students should always come first and that the entire staff should be unified in wanting to provide a quality education for every child at Lincoln and stay at Lincoln. She is striving to unify the parents as well and does not want to show favoritism toward one program at the school over another. Only a handful of parents from Lincoln have complained about Mrs. Cuevas to the superintendent and members of the board. Just a couple of teachers have complained as well. The vast majority of staff and parents at Lincoln strongly support Mrs. Cuevas. Unfortunately, parents who support Mrs. Cuevas have not had an opportunity to voice their tremendous support to keep her at Lincoln because most parents don't even know she felt forced to submit a resignation, let alone that it is on the board agenda for approval tonight. This is a case of a squeaky wheel gets grease. Mrs. Cuevas has been wrongly accused of doing or not doing things, yet there has been no investigation into these actions. People complaining have not gone directly to Mrs. Cuevas to resolve their issues. Mrs. Cuevas has not even been given an opportunity to defend herself either. Mrs. Cuevas has never been evaluated for her work this school year. There is no proof to substantiate an allegation that she is not doing her job properly. People generally believe in a fair process of assessing someone's comprehensive work before making decisions that negatively affect someone's reputation and work performance. What is happening leads straight back to leadership. What warrants a principal's reassessment, firing, or resignation? That action is nearly always reserved for egregious or chronic circumstances. Neither has transpired as it relates to Mrs. Cuevas's overall outstanding principal leadership. Please table Mrs. Cuevas's resignation and work with each other so that she may stay at Lincoln. She can rescind her resignation, rendering the need for you to vote on accepting her resignation move. Let us all work together to fix our school. Thanks, Laura Palmer.
Any discussion from the board?
Well, I'd like to say something. I received a copy of Mrs. Cuevas's resignation via being CC'd in an email that went out to, I believe, the staff and certain parents and I believe the superintendent was CC'd. My only experience with anything at Lincoln so far has been, number one, I'm assuming I'm the board member she's talking about because I was the only board member that was CC'd. I will tell you, I have never met, ever met with a group of parents who complained, who wanted me to do something and were complaining about the principal. Where that came from, I don't know. I met with a group of parents shortly after I became a board member. They wanted me to understand how Lincoln School came to be, came to how it was a dual immersion program. And that was one meeting. That was it. The next meeting I had was with a group of parents who wanted to know if I was familiar with the dual immersion master plan. And I told them I was not. I did not realize the district had one. So they asked me to please get a hold of a copy of the master plan, read it through, and determine whether I felt that all the schools were following the master plan at the same level. That's the only time I met with parents, period. Aside from the time that a group of parents and teachers came to meet with us here at the district office. So the implication, in the interest of transparency, the implication in that email that I met with parents who wanted to complain about the principal and wanted me to do something about it is absolutely false. That never happened. So I just want to go on record as stating that. And again, it's because I'm, and I'm making an assumption that I am the board member since I was the only one who was CC'd on that email. So that's my only comment.
I wasn't contacted either. Okay, so I'll entertain motion.
I'd like to say something.
Yes.
I'm sure there's a counterpoint to this issue. And I have not heard that counterpoint. I don't have the privilege. I've heard some parents who favor, you know, rescinding the resignation or tabling the resignation, but I haven't heard from parents who are okay with that resignation. And I'm sure they're out there. In my opinion, I think that the board superintendent should do her due diligence and work very hard at moving forward with a new administrator, someone who can bring all the factions that exist at Lincoln, bring them together in a spirit of harmony. I have doubts that after one year, this individual can manage that. And she's doing this of her own volition, submitting a resignation out of her own volition.
Well, the implication or the accusation is that she's being told that if she doesn't resign, she's going to be fired. That's what they're saying is going on.
That's what who's saying?
That's what they're implying.
Oh.
They're saying that she wants to resign.
That is not the case.
Well, I don't think, look, they're also saying that these people, the bullies, are somehow going above her head, above maybe the superintendent's head to us, right? And that we're listening to them and we're executing some kind of a master plan here, which... You know, for one thing, talk about protocol. How are all these people coming here with the same script, right? Being told that, how do they know how Ms. Cuevas feels on the inside, right? How can Ms. Cuevas play? It's a little aha. Now, I don't know really strictly what to do. I mean, there are people who feel strongly on both sides of the thing. But I believe in the due process that we've got, you know? I believe that Ms. Martinez would not threaten someone, just a willy-nilly, you know? So, I don't know.
Still, anything else?
Well, I could say, I don't think she's been threatened with release as far as I know. By the way, there's no reason for that. Nobody's approached me or nobody told me that she's doing a bad job. I've just heard that she's done a good job. But I do know that there have been factions at war at Lincoln and I know all of the former principals that were there. I don't know this one. But the former principals had difficulties with these people, with some of the teachers. And I think those teachers should be, they should be gone. But that's my opinion. And that's just, you know, that's a long experience in this district. But as far as her turning in her resignation, I don't think it was asked for or forced.
That's my, if I may, that's my perception also that if the individual submits a letter of resignation or, you know, a meeting and goes over it with their boss and then comes through, either you accept it or don't accept it. But at the same time, when you're being harassed, I don't like to use the word, it's a little bit more vicious when it says harassed. It's, you have an opinion at both ends. Yes, no, this is the principal we want. Yes, no, this is the program we want. Yes, no, this is how I'm going to operate. No, the principal operates. The principal works directly with the superintendent and other colleagues at the district office because they want to get the master plan for the school itself to go through. Now, if people personally don't like the way they walk, the way they talk, the kind of language they use, as long as it's not vulnerable, I mean, negative, negative language, you should work with it, you know? I've been in situations, not only from Vietnam to the University of California as a manager, as an operator, and coordinating conflict. But the thing about it is that superintendent and the principal, they need to work together. And if it's not workable, then either you stay under condition or you leave at your will. But at the same time, my superintendent right now will do what she can do to keep the principal and have a dialogue. And if it doesn't work out, walk away. I don't know if I can make it clear, I've made it clear enough, but, you know, I didn't get any information from the individual who resigned. But if that's what the individual wants to do, do it. Do it. You have to go through the process again to get a new principal. But at the same time, that person made a decision with her boss. You did a letter?
I submitted a letter.
You submitted a letter, okay.
Via email.
Via email.
Any other comments? Okay, do we have a motion?
I'd like to entertain the motion. The motion that we accept Mrs. Cuevas's resignation. So second.
Okay, we've got a motion, a second, to accept the resignation of Ana Cuevas. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay.
Aye.
Let's move on to the review of contracts under number five. Five A, Keith Thompson.
I just asked to pull this item because I understand that it is for, it's contracting for a student to attend a non-public school and I get all that and why. But I was wondering, do we transport, the only question I had is, the $198 a day, this is just, the student is not an overnight placement, it's just a day. So who's transporting the student? Are we on the hook for transportation as well? Or is that included in the $198 a day? I guess, but my question is, would this get more expensive?
It's a good question.
They can't hear you.
You can't hear me, sorry. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
I'll talk louder, I can talk really loud. On the IEP, we are legally responsible for transportation. When we offer a placement, the offer of aid, the free appropriate public education is in a place where it's not our home school, we are legally responsible to transport a child. The rate that is on there is for the educational placement only.
Okay.
So you're, can you state your name?
Beth Beer, sorry.
So it's that this child attending that non-public school is actually going to cost more than just the $198 a day? I mean, in terms of transportation, because we'll pay.
Transportation is a separate contract.
Okay, all right. That was my question, if that included transportation or if it was something else.
Anyone else have questions, comments about item five A?
First of all, in the consent agenda, this is, the description of services says speech and language services and I think that was a little confusing. But on the contract for services, on the form itself, it says districts and signatures, board signatures required, and there's only three there. I bring this up and I'll be bringing it up for some of the other ones because this is exactly what happened a few years ago that many of these contracts did not have the signatures that the district form itself requires, but they also, and I didn't see that here, but in years past, often the board would be voting on a contract after the date that those services started. So I guess I'm just bringing up that we don't have the correct number of services or signatures and I want to make sure that we don't go down to where these are really meaningless.
What's that?
That's not for me to respond to. I signed it.
I can sign it. Lydia, was this just by my signature because, did we not make the right copy because of my signature? I signed this one. I can sign it and make it real.
Well, she just wanted to make sure it was signed. Okay, so we have four signatures.
Oh, can I ask one more question? It says no later than 6:30, but truly, that means just the last day of our school year is all we're responsible for? Oh, I can't, okay. So it says services shall begin on or about 4/11/16 and terminate no later than 6/30/16. If our school end date is June the 3rd, then wouldn't that student's end date at this non-public school also be June the 3rd?
Not necessarily.
Okay.
But we do the contracts on fiscal years.
Okay. Why would they not, why would his year be extended?
It depends on what's in the IEP.
Oh, okay.
We have a motion?
So moved. Make a motion.
All right, so do I have a motion to approve the contract for Keith Thompson? Okay.
Second.
So the motion is second to approve that contract. Five A, Keith Thompson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Let's move on to five B.
I also asked this to be pulled and it was just, my guess is the reason we're contracting is because we don't have another speech and language person who can deliver services.
Yeah, yes. Currently, we, there's a statewide, nationwide shortage of speech and language therapists. We currently have four open positions and three other schools that have contracted, there are therapist contracts at the non-public agencies. So this is just to retain one of the current agencies that we have currently a contract with, who wanted a speech therapist. It's a contract for next year.
So if miraculously, three therapists.
Well, we have actually seven, there's seven, there's several openings.
That's just wishful.
Yes, we would love to hire our own folks.
Okay.
Motion on five B?
Depends, does anyone else have any comments, questions? Okay, I'll entertain a motion on five B.
Still moved? That's on 360, the Free Customer Incorporated?
Okay, so I have a motion to approve the contract with 360 Degree Customer Inc. One second.
All second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, five zero. Five C, Eagle Project Management, Ms. Ish.
Okay. I'm sorry.
Carol, we have the floor.
Oh, wasn't it? No, it's okay. Here again, contract for services. This happens to be an old form dated February 2001, where the other forms are, seems like, well, one is May 2015, the other form is January 2014. This one goes back to 2001. Back then, apparently, we only, the district required three signatures, which is what the form says, but there's only two signatures. The contract dates are not too far out, but it says services shall begin on or about March 30th. And here you are on April 11th, voting on it. So these are services that could have already begun and yet we're just now seeing this contract.
Okay, again, the actual verbiage is services shall begin on or about March 30th.
But they could have already started.
I know, but we're about March 30th, aren't we not?
But if they'd already started.
Mr. Strahan would like to address that.
I'm just, you know, this is a matter of the.
We initially put a contract for services for a shorter, earlier period. And as this board meeting came up, we incorporated that with this one. So the honor about includes a couple of days this gentleman has worked. I would tell you that we asked Block Construction to be a construction manager and give us a bid for four projects, the two projects at Lincoln and Roosevelt and two paving projects in Monterey Park and Los Padres. Their bid was $283,000. We asked them to reconsider, drop the paving projects and do the oversight of the windows at Roosevelt and Lincoln. And they came back with $238,000. So we did retain this consulting agency to, after checking their references, and we asked for a $24,000 contract, which we believe will get those windows in or very close to it. We're carefully monitoring the number of hours the person would work as we get into verifying the bids, which we'll talk to a bit later as an action item. And then moving forward with the ordering of windows and the construction to get saved windows that are now 92 and 93 years old at those two sites. But we did have an earlier, under $5,000 contract initiated to, to cover his initial work. Any other questions?
Yeah, Jared. If you see, I understand this correctly, we're, we're hiring this, this firm to manage or oversee the work of putting in windows. And, but doesn't the contractor, the person in contact already have those type of services? In other words, are we, are we paying twice here? The other thing that's, I feel a little bit bothersome is that it's almost like they're stating, we're going to manage this to make sure it comes to fruition correctly. But on the fine print, later on, it says, if you're not satisfied with the work, you have no recourse in suing us or we're not liable. Am I understanding this correctly or?
We've checked his records. He's done multiple projects and they've all been very well received. The scope of the work for this includes hazardous material removal, significant carpentry work, installation, procurement installation of windows and then trimming with metal around the windows to make them all work and fit in a very short period of time. And again, we believed that we could not do this in-house and having to provide the oversight. And the block construction bid was just unacceptable given the money that we have to complete this project. So we were able to find someone who would do it for far less, $200,000 less than block. And we have great faith that he will do a good workforce. I've met him. We've boarded him to make sure and checked him. And we're very confident of his qualifications and our initial discussions with him have been very positive. I think the disclaimer that you can't, you know, drag him down the street if something goes wrong is boilerplate. We will oversee him in weekly meetings to make sure that he meets our needs and that the contractor meets our needs.
Did you have your question answered about Princess?
Yes. Thank you.
Go ahead. No question.
Do we have?
I've been following the project.
Hi, my name is Pamela Connor and I'm from Ramon, Minnesota. I'm not sure President Kim, if you maybe completely understood the point that Carol was trying to make. And those of us who have come to board meetings for quite some time have seen this happen in the past. And since we have a newly established board, we want to be certain that things that come up for consent come up with enough time so that the board can actually make a decision.
No, I agree. I'm looking at it, it's a lot.
When they come up so closely to the time that they're going to be put into effect, you can't really say no anymore. And we've seen this happen with summer items and many things, where it's like, it's too late to say no because we're already doing it. And so it starts to feel that the board is just rubber stamping what the administration has already decided. And so I think her point is just saying there should be enough time for those contracts to come to the board so that if they do get a no vote, other plans can be put into place. And when it feels that the dates are not allowing that, it's really not appropriate for the board to be able to make decisions. And for those of us in the audience, we feel that the board should be making those decisions and not just saying yes to everything that the administration brings. That's what we're supposed to be doing here. And that's why we have such a big group is because we want it to be a decision-making meeting.
Well, well taken. Thank you. Now let me get back to rubber stamping. No, I mean, it really is a good point. I don't know how.
Carol, I heard, I heard you say that.
We, we have, that has been brought up several times. Can we make a note to address that at some point? I mean, in a study session, something?
Oh, that's right. This is an ongoing project. Your question, Mr. Strahan, this is an ongoing project.
We, we had hoped to start the project two years ago. We actually did the front of Roosevelt last year. This is the rest of Roosevelt, exterior windows of the old building and all of the perimeter windows at Lincoln. Significant project with long lead times for the windows.
All right. All levy aside, are we going to approve this contract? Do I have a motion?
Still moved? This is the Eagle Project Management contract.
Okay, great.
All second in motion.
So a motion in the second to approve this contract, even though it is short notice and whatnot, under Eagle Project Management LC. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion passes. Five E, Dovetail Learning.
I ask that this item be pulled as well. And I have many concerns and I, I have many concerns about this project. And my concerns come from the place of, one, we have a district that is completely focused on PBIS. We received a multimillion dollar grant. It is a citywide, not just district-wide, but citywide effort. Ever since I've been coming to board meetings, I've been on the board, I'm hearing nothing other than PBIS for culture and climate, for the LCAP. I mean, everything we do is under the umbrella of PBIS. Our teachers are being trained. Our administrators are being asked to make this a priority. And then, all of a sudden, a new program comes into being that addresses behavior. And I have a problem with that. Because one of the problems I have with a lot of things that school districts often do are they bring in great programs and you are focused on those and there's lots of training and lots of money that goes into them. And then all of a sudden, a new program comes along and out goes the other one and now we're focused on the new one. We're in the midst of PBIS. We're not like at the beginning or the end. We're in the middle of it. I feel like bringing in a new program at this time with this particular staff especially because these are people who are going to pilot units of study. They are just new to the PBI. I mean, they're, they're just coming on board with training. I think to throw another program at them is, I just, I just have a problem with that. So my question, I have many questions. One is, doesn't the need for a toolbox imply that what we're already doing in PBIS is not working? Because shouldn't what we're doing fill the need? Why do we need to bring in a new program to, you know, supplement PBIS? Secondly, has this Tool Works program been, has the PBIS leadership team looked at this program and said, yeah, we think this is a great idea? Why would you have a PBIS leadership team if you don't run things by them? I also, you know, the question is, don't you believe that bringing in another program sends a subtle message that PBIS can be supplanted by whatever program different administrators like? I understand this is a real balance between autonomy, a school site's decision, and cohesiveness. What we are trying to do as a district. But I, I really have a concern about bringing in a new behavior program when this district is already invested in PBIS. So that's why I ask for this item to be pulled.
Understood. Is this a behavior program or is this emotional, some kind of?
It's a social emotional program. And it is about student-to-student interaction. I'm Lori Sanders and I have proposed process before the board on behalf of El Gavilan Elementary School, who is interested in purchasing this as a supplemental curriculum. El Gavilan is beginning next year restarting PBIS in Tier One. And that is the umbrella. This program goes underneath that umbrella. And I can, the principal can, has worked with her staff on bringing this in. She can probably describe it much more, in more detail than I can. But this isn't meant to supplant or compete, but to work with PBIS.
Want to ask?
Good evening. So I do have my staff, some of my staff here. So in the spirit of transparency and commitment, we are not moving PBIS out to bring something else in. PBIS is the context. It's the behavior expectation rules. It's, it's that community context. And toolbox is the social emotional skills, the content that students need in order to be able to meet the behavior expectations, the rules, the umbrella of PBIS. And so toolbox, like many schools in the district, have a social emotional skills program. This would be that piece that dovetails under the PBIS umbrella. And we're very excited about beginning fully with PBIS. You know, we're at a little bit of a different level than some of the other schools in, in some of the initiatives. But we are 100% committed to working with all of the district's initiatives. We worked really hard this year in just, what, six, seven months to create a very solid foundation. There were no structures. There were no protocols. There were no systems in place at the beginning of this school year. And so we worked very hard to get all of that in place so that then we can take these initiatives and we can build them on a very firm foundation versus just building on sand. So that's why we're just a tad behind in some of them. But we're not behind because we're over there plotting and planning and thinking we're going to like do our own thing and go rogue. We're just trying to, to make sure that we have that solid foundation built so that then we can bring PBIS in. We can have a team that's not just going to rubber stamp and give lip service and it's just a list of names. That we're really and truly working through the spirit of PBIS. This is just the social emotional learning skills program that fits into the PBIS structure.
I guess then my question would be back at Lori. Does this then mean that there is no structure in any of the other 13 schools? That, that there is no, I mean, it, it sounds like they're bringing this in to, to support the PBIS efforts. But does that mean the other 13 schools don't have something in place to support their efforts?
Oh, they do. And at varying levels, they have Restorative Justice that has worked with their schools to create respect agreements. Again, that's about student-to-student interaction. And we also have now four of our schools that have already implemented PM PBIS and have certain protocols, again, about how, certain understood student behaviors, about how students interact. Also now have OVEAS. OVEAS is a large program. And it is something that you want to bring in after PBIS is well established because it is a lot of work. This, again, is a curriculum to be used to create common language with students and common understandings within the PBIS structures. PBIS gives the structures. PBIS doesn't necessarily come with a built-in curriculum. That's determined by the sites in terms of the language that students speak. We do use the, you know, be respectful, be responsible, be ready to learn. But then it's up to teachers and all members of staff to explicitly teach those things. And I believe, my understanding is that the El Gavilan staff have been using this toolbox to get a jump start.
So this is more of like a self-awareness type tool? Something that allows kids to understand what they're thinking and how they view and that type of thing, right? Versus rewarding behaviors and?
Yes, it's not systems of discipline or, yeah.